Hi, good evening. I'd like to call the November 21st, 2023 meeting of the County Commissioner to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, where which is chance, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda at the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the county commissioners at our meeting this evening. Okay, we come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Yes.
Thanks, Leah. The audit contract extension, there are two items that needed to be done. First, to approve $9,000 increase for scope, but also to extend the time of the contract. So currently, we have December 15th. The Audit Committee met this morning and agreed to go to December 31st. So the only change we're asking is to change the 15th to the 31st, and then you can approve the contract.
And Mr. Euler, if there's a motion made to approve the consent agenda consistent with the comments just made by the county manager on the audit item, is that an acceptable way to get that done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm moved.
One moment before we do that. Are there any questions from any members of the public about any items on the consent agenda? All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, there's a motion in second to approve the consent agenda with the modifications to the audit contract items as outlined by the county manager. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we now come to public comment. Did anyone sign up? Okay, all right. Well, are there any members of the public who would like to address the commissioners during public comment? I don't know if this has ever happened before.
Maybe for our holiday.
All right. Okay. Under Presentations, we have a proclamation recognizing Native American Heritage Month. And Commissioner Parker Sloan will present the proclamation. And are there some folks from Justin Services here this evening to receive? Right, thank you for being with us. Great, feel free to join us at the podium.
Native American Heritage Month, whereas Buncombe County is committed to creating an inclusive community that celebrates diversity and ensures all residents have equitable opportunities to lead healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable lives. And whereas, in honoring the cultures, traditions, and accomplishments of Native Americans that have shaped our country, we also acknowledge our nation's history of colonialism that has inflicted discrimination, deprivation, violence, and genocide upon Indigenous people. And whereas, the area currently known as Buncombe County, North Carolina rests on land that was first inhabited by the Cherokee people, who flourished here for thousands of years, as well as the Catawba people. And whereas, the Cherokee people endure to this day, having survived catastrophic diseases, loss of their ancestral lands, forced relocation to a reservation, long-term mismanagement at the reservation, family separations through the removal of children to boarding schools, and termination. And whereas, more than 16,000 members of the Eastern Band of the Cherokee now live in the five counties of Cherokee Graham, Haywood, Jackson, and Swain. And whereas, we recognize and honor the generous contributions of the Eastern Band of Cherokee to our economy, culture, and community. And whereas, the Buncombe County Register of Deeds collaborated with Cherokee counterparts to collect information for the creation of the website, "As Long As The Grass Shall Grow," featuring the history of Cherokee land secessions that created Buncombe County. And whereas, the Buncombe County Library System subscribes to and promotes the usage of North Carolina Live Transparent Language online systems, which offers Buncombe County residents free access to learn various languages, including Cherokee. And whereas, the Buncombe County Commissioners selected three artists to bring them themes of racial equity, reconciliation, and restoration to three Buncombe County walls for the Buncombe Creative Equity mural project, forming a collaborative culture of art. And one is dedicated to enhancing awareness of Indigenous people, history, and culture. And the project will involve engagement with the tribal structures within the Eastern Band of the Cherokee people for input on design and syllabary. And whereas, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners support renaming the Great Smoky Mountain National Park's Kleeman's Dome to its Cherokee name, Kowhee. And whereas, we seek to repair the trauma of past oppression and broken trust, both locally and regionally, by lifting up Indigenous cultures and voices and striving together to build a future of shared hope and promise for all. Now therefore be it resolved that on this 21st day of November 2023, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures of Indigenous people, to raise awareness about our shared history, to recognize that truth must come before reconciliation, and to acknowledge the important contributions that Native Americans have made in our making to our community and our nation.
Hi, my name is Sonia Sanuk. On behalf of the Sanuk family, we'd like to thank you for this recognition and dedicate this proclamation to my great uncle, Ozley Bird Sanuk. He served two terms as the chief of the Cherokee Indians, from 1951 to 1955, and again from 1959 to 1963. He was known for working closely with the state and federal government to ensure greater autonomy for the Cherokee. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you for being with us, Sonia. We appreciate you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner, for reading the proclamation. All right, we do not have any public hearings this evening. Ms. Pender, do you have any items on the county management report?
No, sir, no report.
All right, great. Also, no old business items. All right, so we come to new business and consideration of the franchise agreement for Buncombe County for solid waste. And Dane Peterson, our solid waste director, will get us started on this.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Happy Thanksgiving. My name's Dane Peterson, Buncombe County Solid Waste Director, and I'm here to continue our discussion on the residential waste and recycling collection contract in Buncombe County. Also here presenting this evening is Waste Pro Regional Vice President, Chip Jingles. So let's talk about background. The current franchise waste collections contract began January 1st of 2020. This was a five-year contract with two-year extension options. The scope of service is weekly trash and every other week recycling collection in the unincorporated areas of Buncombe County. And as we've discussed, Buncombe County staff and Waste Pro have been negotiating on an extension term through calendar year 2028. We want to provide some feedback. Had some good dialogue in the November 7th briefing, and a couple of questions that we wanted to discuss was, first, is there a way to know if weekly recycling will result in more recycling? And as we look at that, we feel like it's unclear if it would increase or decrease if it went to weekly collection. You know, with 96-gallon cart collection programs, it is less common that there is weekly pickup for recycling. You know, similar to City of Asheville, which is every other week, is the way our current service is set up. And also, there was just a lack of data with similar market information to offer a reliable answer there. Second topic was if we make a change in recycling frequency to weekly recycling, does it have to be system-wide? And we feel like, again, that's yes, as the current discussion and conversation with Waste Pro is associated with system-wide changes and not having multiple services within the same routes. Another topic was specifically with Catawba County, one of the counties that we benchmarked as far as scope service and then pricing as well. So specifically with Catawba is Republic countywide. Republic is the service provider for Catawba County. It's an exclusive franchise. So yes, Republic is in all unincorporated areas of Catawba. They do not pick up municipalities. That was another question that was asked, which is a similar model to the portion for our system. However, Republic does also manage five convenience sites in Catawba as part of that exclusive franchise agreement. And then the last topic we wanted to talk about from the briefing was what are the costs associated with another recycling cart in lieu of recycling for the customer? So that's something that county staff and Waste Pro have been discussing. Chip will be able to provide some more information on that. And at this time, for this portion of the presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Chip.
Thanks, Dane. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. And as Dane stated, I'll just go ahead and get, before I forget, that second recycle cart. Currently, we charge $10.79 for an additional cart, and with it being recycled, we're willing to go to $5.91 for the second recycle cart. Okay?
That's the monthly fee.
That would be the monthly fee for the cart, for the second. That's in addition to the regular fees. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. And some of this, I know Dane talked about in his presentation, and I'll try my best not to be redundant. But you know, Waste Pro has been in the community since 2009, and we are committed to Buncombe County and to providing good customer service and keeping the county clean and safe. Here's some of the things that Dane spoke about, the contract, this most recent contract started in January 1st, 2020, with a five-year agreement with the option for two, two-year extensions, or you know, to, you know, for an additional four years is what we're looking at. And this is for weekly trash and biweekly recycle service as the core part of the contract. And we talk about why we're here. We're asking because of some of the market conditions that have changed for our industry. You know, it's perfect timing for Buncombe with the new contract, not for us. As soon as the contract started, we had a pandemic. I don't know if anyone remembers that, but there was a pandemic, and you know, we saw conditions change drastically through the course of the pandemic, and we'll talk about some of that. But costs have increased, you know, tremendously for us. I was just looking at some of the truck costs because I was just working on putting it together my budget for next year. And some of the trucks that we ordered literally for this contract at the beginning of the contract are 100 and, like, $155,000, $160,000 more, you know, just over this time period. And man, the projections for these trucks over the next few years because of some of the new laws that have been put in restricting the use of diesel fuel and things of that nature, these costs are really going up. So a lot of costs have gone drastically. I did a poll on my payroll, too, and you know, on average, it looks like we pay around 90% more than we paid at the start of the contract. So we have some serious increases there. And it's also evident in other bids that we've seen throughout the market. We just felt it was necessary to share that with you. We've seen contracts with increases of 20% to 40%, in some cases more. And here's a slide, this is an interesting slide here because you have Waste Pro side on the right here and Buncombe County side on the left. They inserted here some of the pricing that the county found. So you'll see where we are currently at 22.55, and then you'll see some of our proposed rate, starting off next year at 25.16. And then you see a comparison with some of the other counties. You have Guilford County, which is, you know, 25.50. And that Catawba County, that's the cost if you do not recycle, the 28.77. And then you have Alamance County there, 32.29. And one thing I wanted to say, I know Dane pointed out.
I'm sorry, could, just a quick clarification on the Catawba County. You're saying that's, the 22.15 does not include recycling?
Yes, it does, but they have a penalty if you choose not to recycle. So if you choose not to recycle, they actually charge you the 28.77.
Okay, but as long as you recycle, that's your bill for trash recycling?
Yes, yes, the 22.15.
So what we found was the 27 was weekly recycling. That premium was for weekly recycling.
I think, well, you know, what I found, and Dane, you looked in there as well, right? Wasn't that the penalty if they don't recycle?
Yes, sir. That's our understanding, talking to Catawba Solid Waste Department, that when they started the contract in 2018, obviously, the recycle markets were different. There was actually rebates at that time, and as part of the incentive, that was actually laid out where if you don't participate in recycling as a subscriber, there's actually an upcharge to do that.
They're tough, they're tough down there on the, better recycle.
Obviously, the recycle markets are drastically different, but it's an interesting program.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Dane. Also, too, just when you're talking about Catawba County, a couple of things I wanted to point out to make sure we're trying to compare as much as, you know, reasonably as possible. That 22.15, that's this year's rate, right? So you know, it's not, you know, our rate this year is not, well, you see, it is 22.55, so very close there, right? But another big factor with Catawba is the fact that their disposal rates are much lower than the rates that we have here in Buncombe County. So you know, you look at it, I calculate around a 25%. They're probably about 25% lower disposal rate. So you know, when you look at apples-to-apples comparison, they're really very, very similar. Okay? But yeah, you have our rates and our proposed rates to the right, so. And then we just talk about some of the benefits of a contract renewal. And I think the biggest thing for me is, you know, you know where you are and what the rates are going to be for an extended period of time. As I look, every time we went back to the drawing board, our numbers kept creeping up because, you know, things are costing more and we become more informed. So I think that that is a big thing. And also make sure that we keep the level of service current at where it is now. And you know, we know the community. We've been servicing it since 2010, I believe actually was the start date, so we're very familiar with the community. We know the community. We know the challenges. You know, there are a lot, you have thousands of what we call premium service customers, backdoor customers that we service weekly that present tremendous challenges for us. They really do. And something that I don't think most, a lot of your other providers are used to. And you know, we're a little different from the national companies, the larger companies that you see. A lot of them I know before, you know, they only wanted to talk to you if you had one bill, you know, if you were billing all of the residents. We're still willing, you know, we came in and even when you look at this current agreement right now, I think we were the only provider to actually provide a complete bid. Is that, would that be accurate, Dane? Yeah, so you know, just, you know, we want to be here and we enjoy service in the community. And you know, again, what we were looking to do is give you, let you know exactly where our costs were, give you the opportunity to spread it out rather than having a huge jump at one time. And here we have a look at the complaints. I know that we talked about, I don't know if everyone realizes, but just with the trash and recycle, you know, we have millions of service opportunities this year. I mean, you look at over 2.4 million just since January 1st this year, and we've had 82 complaints. And I also teased Dane about that earlier because all those complaints, I'm not sure if they're verified, if it's something we have to look into because you get calls of people, hey, you know, I'm out here standing out here with the air horn, keeping the bears away from my cart, you know, things of that nature. Those are the type calls that we get, so we have to double check to make sure all those complaints are verified. And that's all I have. Available for any questions?
Chip, thank you so much for the presentation. We might have some questions, so.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, Board. So our last slide was actually reminding the Board of the decision point and the options that you have before you. So let's see, thank you for queuing that back up. So talking about that, extension option, as has been laid out with Waste Pro, per the proposal. Also within that, Waste Pro did provide for weekly recycling collection, so that was, that's a consideration as well. And the other option is to issue a request for proposals and to seek competitive bids for these collection services. So I know these are a big decision, but that's what's, we're asking for direction from the Board for.
Dane, Dane, one question. I know you mentioned this, I think, in our last meeting. If we, if we do decide to go out for an open bidding process on this, could you remind us what the timeframe for taking that out would be, and then the time allowed for responses, and then the final decision?
Absolutely, yes, sir. So talking with our procurement team on the county side, the last time we bid in 2019, we got the RFP out in January 18th, and the, we had a recommendation back to the Board because that has to be approved in two consecutive Commissioner meetings. We got that back and finalized May 21st. We anticipate around a four- to five-month window to do that. And you know, if there was other companies or another company that was selected through that process, to your point, Chairman, we want to consolidate that timeframe, make sure it's a quality process, but also consolidate to make sure that if it were a new vendor, they would have time to ramp up for a, you know, a large, a large contract like this. So that would be the target is, if that's the decision, get the RFP out as soon as possible. I think we do have, in 2019, it was a good RFP. There were things, I think, that can be simplified, that can help what we target to involve as many contractors in this business as possible. That would be our goal, is to have as many competing as possible. But that's the general window, sir.
And I know y'all have been sort of planning for different contingencies around this, right? So would, if we did decide to take it out to a bidding process, would, would you preview the RFP criteria with the Board so we could? Because there are some important decisions to make around that, right? Like, for example, like what would be the duration of the new franchise agreement, right? And there's pros and cons of it being shorter versus longer, right? So has that already, have some of those decisions already been made, or is there still some more work to be done around kind of making final decisions on some of the key business terms that the county would be asking for companies to, you know, put forward their proposals on to tell us what they could do?
It's not finalized yet. We actually pulled the old RFP out and started tweaking the dates, but we haven't made all those final decisions yet. If we do bring it back to the Board, it would need to be something we do in December, so we want to get it out as quickly as possible, if that's the direction that you choose to go, because we want to give that, whoever that vendor is a time to respond and then get up and running.
Understood.
So, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Dane, any other, was that the last?
Yes, sir, that was the information lesson. Of course, if y'all have more questions, be happy to try to answer those.
All right, well, thanks for the presentations, Chip. Thanks for the presentation as well. So I guess we'll just, we'll open it up for Commission discussion at this time.
So I'm willing to start. If Waste Pro had honored the original contract with those CPI adjustments, I would feel comfortable doing the extensions. However, since they're increasing the rates for our residents beyond that CPI, I feel compelled to go to bid.
Okay. All right, other questions or comments from Commissioners?
You said that, Dane, you said, what has to go before the Board in two consecutive meetings? Is it the RFP itself or just the advertising of a RFP coming?
Yes, sir, that's when we would have received the bids back, evaluated those, and then when we make a recommendation to the Board, per our ordinance, that would need to be considered in two consecutive meetings.
For the final decision.
Yes.
Contract or franchise, that would need two votes?
Granting the franchise, yeah, thank you.
To grant a new franchise, yeah.
In terms of a December timeframe for a hypothetical RFP, that's just a matter of putting it out there.
I think what the Chairman was asking around was the actual decision points and what we are asking that vendor to perform. You guys want to weigh in on that scope, so we want to bring the scope to you to take a look at that in December, so we can then finalize it and get it on the street late December, early January.
Yeah, I mean, I know we do a lot of RFPs and a lot of those are just done at the staff level, but there are some kind of fundamental decisions to make, right? Especially around the duration of the, of the contract that, and I don't have a specific position on that, but it just, once we do it, we're kind of locked into some of those key decisions, right? All right, well, I'll jump into, you know, we reviewed, we reviewed, the staff brought the, brought this issue originally to the Energy and Environmental Committee for some discussion, I guess, maybe, maybe two months ago, to see if we would want to make a recommendation to the Board around this issue. And you know, and kind of to my surprise in a way, you know, the committee, which Terry and Parker and I serve on, as well as, you know, several citizens unanimously supported the idea of extending the Waste Pro agreement for, for the additional terms. But that was, at the time, that was based on our understanding that it would be on the business terms that were agreed to in the current franchise agreement. So, so you know, Waste Pro did come back after that and say, you know, we really, for them to agree to the extension, they would, they would need to have the increases that are outlined in the, in the report that we have in front of us, in front of us in the packet. So I think it would have been, I think it would have been a very different recommendation if we had known that there would be these significant increases proposed. So although I voted for that recommendation at the committee level, I'm, I'm also in agreement with, with Vice Chair Wells' recommendation to take the proposal out to, to an open bidding process. If the, and it's not due to dissatisfaction with Waste Pro's services. I mean, we've, we've, you know, this is a tough business, and I think it's, you know, what the folks do there, I mean, and our surveys show that, although there's always issues from time to time, the large majority of the, of our constituents are happy with the service and think that they're doing a good job. So it's really just more of, you know, the significant increases that are being proposed. I couldn't support that without, without going through an open bid process. I think it is, it is a tough time for the operators to do this business with inflationary issues, so I'm certainly not saying that there's no justification for this, that this is, or that this is all sort of purely profit-driven. But the increases are just so, so much more significant than what was in the agreement that I, I would support doing a bid. If it was closer to the original agreement, I'd probably be inclined to extend the current agreement. All right, any other questions or comments?
I'm of the same mind.
Commissioners, could we take a short break? Is that possible?
Yes, we can. Let's take a, let's take a, let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll reconvene.
Thank you.
Or is there a motion?
If no other questions or comments, I will make a motion to issue the RFP.
All right, there's a motion in second to issue, uh, solicitation through an RFP for the solid waste contract. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Chip. Thank you, Dane, for being here this evening. All right. Next item under new business is consideration of a budget amendment for Asheville City Schools for the baseball field lights.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this budget amendment is to establish lottery-funded capital project for Asheville City Schools with a budget of $330,000. This is for construction of the baseball field lights at Asheville High School for which design was approved in June.
Motion to approve this budget amendment.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got, um, one Board appointment to consider, and that's an appointment to the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization.
I move to appoint Larry Harris.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Great. Uh, reports from Boards and Commissions.
So I mentioned last week, I would have a final update from the Asheville Buncombe Regional Sports Commission. The founding members met unanimously approved to revise the bylaws, establishing an 11-member Board of Directors from the current makeup of Board members. And each of those members will have an industry that they are representing. The Board voted to have theirs, um, economic development, outdoor recreation, youth sports, K-12 at youth, hospitality and a couple others. The four founding seats will remain on the Board, but not the current makeup of those founding seats. So when we reconvene in January and are looking at our calendar year of Boards and Commission appointments, we will need to make an appointment to that. Whether that is, it can certainly be a Commission member or we can put it out through our normal Boards and Commission process to have, um, folks apply for us to seat in that role moving forward. So that's, um, been at least a year's worth of work moving into a final decision on that. And, um, there was a task force that met, I think I've mentioned, that Tim, Tim spent an, an exorbitant amount of time and hours representing Buncombe County throughout that process. So we appreciate Tim getting us to the point where we were able to present those bylaws. Y'all have any questions?
How will it be funded going? Oh, I'm sorry. How will it be funded going forward?
It's a great question, Commissioner Whitesides. Maintaining their 501(c)(3) nonprofit status, they will, they'll move into the realm of fundraising, whether it's through sponsorships for their events primarily. Currently, the city and county and Explore Asheville do fund. And, um, they'll have to continue going through, at least with us, their, their funding process. And, um, how that looks for the city and Explore Asheville is, you know, based on their, how they do their funding. But they will definitely be moving into the realm of, of fundraising in a way that I, will certainly be new to the Sports Commission staff.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other updates? Okay, great. We have a couple of announcements. On November 30th at 10:00 a.m., the County Commissioners will hold a budget retreat at the East Asheville Library at 3 Avon Road, Asheville NC 28805. December 5th, the County Commissioners will hold a briefing meeting at 3:00 p.m. at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. And on December 5th at 5:00 p.m., the County Commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Is there a need for a closed session? Okay, great. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.